This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30. Go ahead and start the meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Present.
Mr. Stoneman?
Here.
Mr. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Tweedy?
Here.
Here. Could you shut the door back here for us? Thank you. If you want to participate in opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand.
Father, we ask you to be with us tonight at this meeting. Give the City Commission the wisdom to make the right choices for our city and be with those that may be speaking tonight. Give them a clear voice to be able to express what they need to express. Father, I just ask that you be with our first responders and thank them so much for the work that they're willing to do for us. Jeez, thank you.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any additions? Relations to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Any discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. It's consented agenda approve the minutes, approve that October 1st, 2024 regular meeting minutes is written in the resolution authorizing a public meeting of the governing body to attend the land bank board trustees meeting at 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in a commission room at the City Hall located at 118 West Central Avenue in Arc City, Kansas.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any basis?
City manager department item number one is an ordinance authorizing the rezone of 800 and 824 West Madison Avenue from a C3 general commercial district to an I1 light industrial district.
Commissioners, this request went before this planning commission in September. At that time, they voted to recommend approval of it. So this case would rezone the property from a C3 general commercial district to an I1 light industrial district. And the purpose of it was Mr. McLeod, who owns that property, you might be familiar with him, owns Mr. Boardwalk. And they make these boardwalks that primarily where you see it is on beaches. Currently, they're based in New Jersey, and then I think they have offices here. But he wants to move everything to Arc City. In order to that, he needs to expand, and he doesn't have the proper zoning in order to do what he wants to do there. So that's what he's proposing. That area is, there's some industrial in the area, LG Pike is to the south, for instance, and there is residential to the north, but I think we can deal with some of the issues pretty easily. We didn't have any, didn't have any issues at the planning commission. Nobody can actually pretty much sail through that group, so. Any questions you might have?
Josh, do you, is that building gonna butt right up against this current building or will the alleyway still be there?
The alley will be retained.
We vacated that alley some time ago, though, didn't we?
We did, however, we reversed it. Jay may have been on this commission at that time, I can't remember. But what happened was the owner at that time was gonna put in a daycare center.
Oh, that's right.
But for that, yeah. Never did it, and so the city commission at that time rescinded the vacation order. And that's, he's not planning to do anything to that.
No, he can use the alley for delivery. Yeah.
Any other discussion on it? Well, that being said, I make a motion authorizing the rezoning of 800 and 824 West Madison Avenue from a C3 general commercial district to the I1 light industrial district. Second. Okay, it's been moved second. Any discussion on it? No, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Stoneman?
Yes.
Mr. Stover?
Yes.
Mr. Tweedy?
Yes.
Narwhal?
Yes. Motion carries.
Number two.
A resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to enter into agreements for the entrance welcome signs project with various contractors for an amount not to exceed $42,474.
So our current welcome signs that we have entering into the city, they're dilapidated. They're either missing, they're outdated, it's hard to see them, so we're looking to replace four directions. We chose to go with Silverdale Quality Stone, just being a local company, we say, but the limestone, it's gonna last 100 years, so we're very comfortable with that investment. The limestone would be, would be installed on the north, the east, and the south, and on the west side, we'll put aluminum commercial grade letters up on the bridge along.
These are north, this is northeast and south?
Correct, correct.
And Tiffany's got the west one?
The bridge.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. There you go.
Yeah.
And so with the bridge, then we'll change out the three lights that are right, that are stationed right there with LEDs. We'll try to illuminate it, put it more flood, flood zone, as far as they call it, with the lighting, so that way it'll spread out about 20, 25 feet. We have to add a fourth just to make sure we catch the end of it we can, but we have those options there. So that way, all four directions, you'll see, as you're entering into the city of our Kansas City, it'll be fresh curb peel, it'll be updated, which that's what we're excited for.
That's gonna be real nice, you know, looking for, you know, people coming to Arc City. We need that for a long time, so.
I'm sure this answer is yes, because the sign is just west of there. They're gonna tear that out?
Correct.
Okay.
Turn over the hill.
Turn over grass and stuff again.
Yes. Look to install this a couple of weeks after Arcoala, our crews will have to clean up, and then they'll have to prepare the foundation, and then the trough that the, about eight tons approximately, the stones will sit in, so. And then we'll look for some potential curb peels, some vegetation flowers, or some bushes to put around there to really spruce it up.
Question is, the rocks gonna be sandblasted?
Say, I'm sorry?
Will they be sandblasted with the names and stuff on there?
Yes.
I know I have seen some that have put metal letters on them.
No, no, they will be sandblasted, and then we'll go ahead and insert the black ink in there to really get it stand up.
That'll last a lot longer, that one.
Yeah, and then we can also refresh it about every five years. Exactly. Minimal cost.
And right now, where's the money coming from out of this?
The visitors, well, the transient gas, transient gas tax.
I make a motion that we're authorized city of our Kansas City to enter into agreement for the entrance welcome signs project with various contractors for an amount not to exceed
Second. It's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Who had a second? We had kind of a tie. We'll just let you pick.
I'll, I'll put it as a dual second.
Okay.
At the same time.
Okay. Number three.
So I'm gonna read off the screen. Number three is a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to approve a temporary extension of license premise at the CM bar to allow parkland hospitality area on public property located in. So I actually worked with the owner, Randy Webb, on this item. This is a request that she put in last year. However, due to the cold weather, I don't believe there were many people that got to participate in her parkland that she worked really hard for, so they would like to bring this back again this year. When we talked up work session, we discussed adding hours, so I did change, which an updated version of the draft or resolution, I'm sorry, that says that her opening hours, which are different, so they're four o'clock during the week, and then 11 o'clock on Saturday. So on item, line number three, under, I added opening hours till midnight, because we didn't wanna go past midnight. And then I did move section four up in her resolution to talk about the common consumption area rules, because that will be different. We will see partners that are with their bracelets and that are legal, so she's ID-checked, with the plastic cups, be able to walk about, clear plastic cups, red seal cups, be able to walk about within the common consumption area hours outside of that parkland here.
So she's, she's closing at 12, but she, they can walk till 10?
Yes. They can walk till 10, so they can still be in the parkland areas of 10:00, and then her bar itself.
Okay.
Hours, so I think it'll still work.
Yeah.
I make the motion for a resolution authorizing city of our Kansas City to approve her temporary extension of license premises at the sandbar to allow the parkland hospitality area on public property located at 408 South Summit Street.
Second. Okay, it's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? Okay, if not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Number four.
An ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol and liquor at designated area of Ben Givens Park, city center park, city, center city park during Arcoala on October 23rd through 26th, 2024. So this is a, a new request by Arcoala. Last year, they went with a new vendor, which was Chupsy Bevco, and they did really, really well, and they would like to come back again and serve at the park. They are a duly licensed caterer with the state of Kansas. They're getting licensed with the city. Their license is up for renewal. I do have that, so I will issue that license along with their common consumption licenses I just got tonight. So they want to participate in the common consumption area as well, and so they will do the wristbands, the cups, everything.
And sell the cups so that they, they can walk through the designated areas. It's kind of silly question, why is this a roll call vote? I mean.
Okay, so it's an ordinance because we are simping out of what state statute allows.
Okay, got it. Okay. Okay, I'm with you.
So we're, we're saying that we are chartering out of that just for this, this one event.
Will that be good for next year or this, this one time?
Just this year, yeah. Just this year.
Okay, alright.
But yeah, we bring this every single year.
Okay. Alright.
And so their, their hours are noon to 10 Wednesday, I'm sorry, yeah, Wednesday, the 23rd through Saturday is when that beer garden will be open.
Good.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol and liquor at a designated area of Ben Givens Central City Park during Arcoala on October 23rd to the 26th, 2024.
I'll second that. Been moved second. Any other discussion on it?
Now, does Bevco really wanna do the open, the common consumption? Do they really wanna let people out of the beer garden?
And we actually have one of the owners here.
Oh, okay.
I didn't hear your question. Do we really want to let people?
Leave the premises.
I mean, I think.
That's the whole deal. I mean, to capture your audience.
Yes, we've spoken with our vendor as well, and the Arcoala distributors, and I, I think for the betterment of the sale, because we're also splitting profit.
Okay.
Back to the association as well. Last year, with the sandbar being open, and then there was an event, I think at 208, so it just got, and then the other establishment you all have here, I think allowing patrons to walk around the common consumption area will allow people to not feel so kept in in one area or have to stay there.
Yeah.
Is, I think, the goal, I hope. Hopefully, the weather abides this year.
Oh, wait, let's look at, we have perfect weather. She has no rain.
I agree.
The other thing with you guys right there in the middle, if they're walking from one place to the other, they run out of beer after they stop in there and go, and keep moving. I mean.
So, yeah, we just got our license approved today. I just handed it to Tiffany before I got here.
I think they understand the liability.
Yes, we do.
We've had conversations.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna flip this slide.
Okay. So it's a roll call vote?
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Stover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoneman?
Yes.
Mr. Tweedy?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. City manager updates?
So, we'll start off with the water treatment plant cyber attack. So the investigation's still ongoing. The FBI has returned the servers, and now they are in New York with SRM, which is the forensics group that's, that's working with our insurance company to try to analyze them and figure out what happened and who did it. The new servers are here now and installed, and I don't, Rod can probably update you better on some of that, but I think there's more work to be done. The thin clients, which are the workstations that are around the, the lab and offices that tie into the servers are, are they here in town?
We got word they were, but they didn't make it.
Okay, so I'm waiting on the thin clients for that to be installed. So is there anything else you wanna update on that? Like, we're still.
Yeah, still in, still in the process.
And, and we're still waiting for SRM to finish their forensics, and we have a meeting with them Monday afternoon, and hopefully they'll have a chance to have gotten it. So they didn't have, there's some special connectors they needed to, to hook up to the servers they didn't have, so they had to order those, and they were like coming in, so that part's been kind of slow coming. So I don't know if they'll find a lot more than what the FBI did, but anyways, the process we're going through, so kind of we're at there. But we did have, they still coming in, the operators from Hutch coming in, and we're leaving our guys, giving them some time off. Mike Frank came out of retirement to work a few shifts to kind of help the guys, they were getting, they were getting hammered, would have to be at the, you know, plant 24/7. So that's helped a lot. So we really appreciate those, the operators from Hutch coming down, and of course, obviously we'll compensate the, the cost of that, so, but that's been really important to give our guys a break so that they're not.
So we got about another couple of weeks of that before we, when that water tower gets done, Rod?
Uh, yeah. I got word that they're done on the inside, got a coat on the outside. I'm gonna call engineer today, because I was hoping to get, go back to the same blue color, like colored, could be okay. By preference.
Another question, down there where a water tank gets down or by the water plant, you know, it's kind of fading a little bit. Are we gonna be able to wash that off or?
Yeah, I've got one, one bed to clean that, clean the clear well.
Yeah.
And I'm waiting on another from, from the wire, which is actually the people.
Okay. Yeah, because that's a beautiful, that's a beautiful tank, you know, it's kind of fading this a little bit, but.
Yeah, I'll probably try to get two beds.
Okay.
Probably come up with a few.
Okay. Go ahead, Ray, I'm sorry.
So I think that's kind of it on the, on the water treatment plant, though. Things are finally kind of gelling there. So if you recall, we applied for an LWCF grant, which is a land water conservation grant through Wildlife and Parks to, for pickleball courts there at Wilson Park. So that application's been turned in. Today, the grant coordinator for that was on site to look at the project and, and review the grant application and kind of see what we're proposing and the location of that, so. So after, we were his last grant visit, so now they'll go back and they'll evaluate the, all the grants, applications, and, and if, if our application is something they want to move forward, then that, they'll make that decision here before the end of the year, and then they make that decision. The ones that they want to move forward will go to Washington DC for their approval. So we should have approval for the grant or not by March of '25, so that's kind of the timeframe we're on there. But I understand they had 14 total applications, and if all the grants were, met all the criteria and were good, good, good applications, they would have the money to fund actually all the grants, is what they were saying, so.
Everything we asked for?
Uh.
Everything we asked for?
Yeah.
So that's good, that's good stuff.
So anyway, we'll keep our fingers crossed that our grant application meets all the criteria and moves, moves forward.
Are those 14 were just in Kansas?
Yeah, so this is a Wildlife and Parks grant, but they're federal dollars, so the Wildlife and Parks will go through and, and they'll make sure that they approve of it, and if everything looks good under their, their rules, and, and then it'll go to DC for their final approval, make sure it meets all qualifications there, so. What's on there? On the, so the, the property we did the master planning on for residential that the city owns up north, we're now working on some policies for public improvement cost appropriate appropriations and financial guarantees and letters of credit policies. And so kind of, we've got all that work together. We got a redline version. We have a professional out of Wichita that does a lot of these agreements with developers and stuff, take a look at them and make suggestions on changes and stuff. So Josh and I will meet with them on Thursday and kind of go through that, and hopefully here in the next few, few weeks, maybe next month or so, we'll have a policy that we can get in front of you guys to, to approve, and then that'll be kind of the next step in starting to visit with developers and attracting, you know, different developers to look at that property, so. So what's going on there? We're, we're starting to plan for Chris, kind of the holiday season, and Christmas Eve is on Tuesday, the 24th. We're just kind of seeing if the commission had any issues with the city, if we close the city down at noon on Christmas Eve, making sure that there's no issues with that. So just to consensus setting's fine, just wanna make sure that.
They'll give them the whole day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't be paid. It would be, they'd have to use leave, their leave for, but it would just be, so anyway, just wanna make sure that you got to get that. The other thing I wanted to remind you of is the Joby Avery Award will be October 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Avery Center, it's a school.
That's your speak.
The, make sure you look at the financial summary in the back of the packet, kind of you can up there where we're at, budget wise and cash balances and things. And then also, there is a, a project status report in front of you. Nick, did you have anything on there you wanted to update them on?
The green sand application was today, so that's been officially submitted. The asset management, the valve exercise that they got to go around, GISing, or excuse me, grabbing all the coordinates for valves, water lines, that's still ongoing, so the guys are utilizing that technology, which is great. You see, the street condition assessment, they're getting pretty close to wrapping all, all the data now plugged in, so now they're just getting local numbers from construction companies, so that way we can really get a better understanding. If we want to replace a certain street, or we can have projects lined up, so we're ready to go when grants are made available, we'll have pretty much turnkey estimates ready at hand, so it's just gonna make life a lot easier. Let's see. With the Arc City entrance signs being approved tonight, the guys will start working on the foundation work, preparing the troughs as quick as possible, and then they'll transition right into the Arcoala preparation, so. And then the levy certification, we are phasing out of one. We're gonna be going into phase two here shortly, so I'll bring that cost estimate to you. I was working on a grant where we could help offset the cost for phase two, so I'm waiting here back if we're approved for that, to help lower that initial cost, which is great. So we're hoping out of the five phases, technically, we don't have to do four, because one of the phases means we're a little bit newer on one of the areas of the levy, so we're gonna have to have that evaluated as in-depth and pay for that. So we're hoping only four phases we have to pay for, but we'll see. The CDBG housing grant, we're getting ready to put that on the agenda here, I believe, the next meeting, if not the meeting after that, so we'll roll right into the second phase. We've already identified the second area, so we're just putting all the data together and getting the team sitting down at the table and getting everything worked out, so we're excited for that next phase, and just hopefully we can continue with those dollars and rolling phase after phase and just make a difference in Arc City, so. That is it.
I got a question on it, well, or the hiking bike trail. It's already been approved, but when, when are they gonna start?
It's approved, yeah, so I haven't heard anything yet. My understanding, they're still putting some information together. It should be going out to let, I have the date. I need to double check on that date.
And every, she's already moved the lines they had to move for that? Okay, so that's all taken care of.
Yeah, it is.
They haven't been moved yet, they've all been marked.
Okay.
The, had some inspection and, oh gosh, it was inspection, engineer inspection estimates last week that we had to approve and get sent in, so I think all the paperwork parts done now that we need for that, so it, things will be moving here pretty quickly.
It's been ongoing for about four years.
Or five. It was start, I think the grant was awarded before I started.
Yeah. Yeah, it was with Nick Hernandez when we had him. Then the other question is, on the truck stop, the sewer line cuts underneath the railroad. Have we, they ever got back to us yet on that, or?
Well, have you talked to Chris lately on that?
The last update I had from Chris is, he's still working with the railroad as far as getting everything squared away on their end for approvals, but we're shooting for December as far as install on the west side going towards school, USD 47. So everything's still tracking as far as us finishing the truck stop, so we shouldn't have any interruptions.
Okay.
Yes, Smith &amp; Oaks is actively working on it.
Okay. Do we have a start date on the F Street Bridge?
No. No, with, with a few of the grants are out there too, we just wanna be sure that we're fiscally, or smart with our financials as far as next year, '25 and '26, that we don't overstretch, so we wanna find out for sure, especially like our Summit Street grant that we have, that's going from Radio Skyline. We just wanna ensure that those dollars will line up if we're approved of all the grants, so we're just waiting here back.
Okay. So F Street, possibly next year sometime?
It would be late '20, '25.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't even think the funds will be available till close to July of '25.
Okay.
State's calendar. And then you have design work, and that takes time for the design work approval.
We're probably actually closer to '26 before it's.
I think that's what we're hoping for, more '26.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Randy, or anybody from the nation got anything to say, or?
Since I was up there at the pioneer days for the Cherokee Strip Museum, for first year, we think it was quite successful. We had approximately 150 people go through the museum that day.
Was that on Saturday?
That was last Saturday, and took in a few extra donations that we weren't expecting.
That's wonderful.
And several members, Stephen Lucane said they would like to become members of the Cherokee, Cherokee Museum, which will help.
Sure, sure. That's a great name, is it? I might add that we got, the ACES are doing a pool court dinner at the college tomorrow from 11:00 to 7:00, and you can either dine in or drive at north side of the, of the Brown Center, and they'll come right to your car and bring your meal out, and they can go and go and take it back home and stuff, so it's, it's gonna be tomorrow, so it's $10 per meal, so it's pretty good. The guests made, from the audience wants to talk on the agenda?
Yeah.
Let's start on agenda?
Uh, we, Colston, would like to talk about.
Okay.
Mayor of the Commission, thank you for staying me again. I pick up voting. I vote. In previous life, I was a member of some church councils. I was selected as an elder in one congregation, happy to serve them as a shepherd. The voter turnout in that congregation was closer to 100% than the turnout that was at the election that you were elected in. The percentage of people voting for me was much larger than the percentage that you got sitting in the chair that you now hold. The oath of office that you took and a number of the guests in the audience took to defend, uphold, and protect the Constitution against enemies, both foreign and domestic, is important. Cousin Teddy said, "There cannot be a hyphenated America." You cannot be hyphenated. I have enough DNA in my blood that I can prove that I can hyphenate myself all the way down to any measure of society you choose. way down to any measure of society you choose. I'm an American. I'm a Christian. I'm an American by birth, my passport shows that, and I'm a Christian by choice and by How close are we, ladies and gentlemen, to the end of the republic that Benjamin Franklin said we would have if we can maintain it? How close? I can tell, ladies and gentlemen, we're not far away when people don't vote. Not far at all. That statement is accusatory enough, because only twenty percent of your neighbors showed up to vote for you. Eighty percent chose to stay home. The sad part of that is eighty percent that's at home probably were uninformed anyway, and you need to be informed if you're going to vote. And it's my challenge to this city that they should not bring shame to themselves for not voting. They should not bring shame to themselves by going to the poll and not knowing what the most important question on the poll, on the vote is, and ladies and gentlemen, the only question on that ballot is a question of what to do with the funding source for the library. The rest are partisan items. The only non-partisan question is a question about the library. Thank you.
Thank you. I might add, you know, on this voting thing, that the Optimus Club, every four years, we have kids voting, and on all levels, the, the school system, high school through the kindergarten, kindergartners and so forth, they'll have picture votes and so forth, but the reason why we've done that, we've done that since nineteen eighty-eight, and the reason why we've done that is to try to get kids started to vote in, in, you know, in the presidential election, but also, but try to get the parents that stop voting, get them registered where they will vote, you know, I don't, over that many years, I'm not sure, I'm sure we've had some, you know, but you're right, that we need, we need people to vote, you know, stuff, but I wanna make this point, that since nineteen eighty-eight until, till the last presidential election, those kids never lost the presidential election, they always got the, the right on the president, you know, that's amazing, since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm not saying, you know, this election that's gonna be coming up in a couple of weeks, but that's pretty impressive, those kids pay attention to what's going on, so. Anyway, but you're right, we need to, we need to vote. Anybody else got anything? But, uh, I'm making.
Second.
Did you make a motion?
No, I'm gonna have you make it.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second to email, back of the dates, I'd be gone.